Meeting to order. Today's Monday, June 9, 2025, and it is 5:30 PM.
Yes.
Councilmember Ogano.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Council President Che.
Yes.
Councilmember Brady Data.
This is a reminder to please turn off and or mute all cell phones except for emergency personnel, those units we call, and then on Zoom, please stay on mute until you are called upon to speak. We're going to move on to notice agenda compliance for Idaho Code 74-204. Finding that the regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204 within 48 hours prior to the meeting at the city of Bellevue City Hall post office and on the city's website on June 5th, 2025.
That notice for tonight's meeting was posted in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item two, call for conflict as outlined in Idaho Code 74-404. That's pretty mayor's report, mayor and council report. I will go ahead and get us started. As people have probably noticed, the board sign on Highway 75, ITD is starting their Bellevue Pavement Repair Project. There is a bit of a proposed timeline. Traffic control was supposed to begin today, but it's getting that organized with some work starting on the 12th. We plan to have an estimated end date of the project of the 20th. Pavement repair, raising of manholes and water valves on the street and striking was the scope of the project. Kind of flagging the north and the south end of Bellevue. There's a map on our newsletter and on our social media that people can reference. Do you have any questions about that? ITD Shoshone's office would be a great start to get some questions answered and of course, you can always reach out to us at City Hall. Another update on my report, I have the honor of attending the Heritage Court Coronation Ceremony on Sunday, where one of our own was basically honored as our representative in the court and it was a really beautiful ceremony. I took some photos and while I was there, and I'll make sure that gets up on social media for everyone to see, but there was also nice coverage of that and you felt a little bit of perspicacity. I'm going to turn it over to council to see if there's any updates from your respective committees or works that you are experiencing in this time.
That's me. That's me. Okay.
Yeah. And I, we had talked about this, but I somehow didn't quite, I think, excuse me, getting folks ready for emergency preparedness and trying to help our police and fire get that information out. And we had hoped to start with the latest newsletter, so just some of the basic code red information that our departments use. And I just wanted to see if we could prioritize that or if I can work closely on the website and newsletter to make sure that get that information out, that we keep encouraging people to do that and that we set a goal, you know, and try and track that goal for how many of our folks are part of code red that gives them emergency alerts that are more tightly integrated with our department. We had touched on this for the current newsletter, but to really identify it as something more.
Is that something that, Kurt, you're involved in at all or not the genre in terms of code red connectivity with
So.
Marshall's office?
For us, that's probably the easiest way for us to get information out because it's through dispatch. We can literally just get on the radio and say, send out a code red for X and tell them what geographical area and dispatch to do that for us. It's the quickest route for us, especially in the case of an emergency where we don't have time to be door to doors or even be social media.
So then I would say, councilmember Reed, if that is something that you kind of spearheaded and will move forward to try and get it on the next newsletter or website, but let's kind of connect on that after this meeting, maybe in a variety.
The sheriff is probably going to be something in July, so we'll, I'll keep in touch with him and let you guys know what's going on with that.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
So then can I just ask, is that, are you talking about sending up?
For the free.
Or does it not sending up?
Yes, so they can get those, those notifications.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, it's, it's not an end all be all, but it is probably easiest way to keep folks, I'm, I'm sure we'll talk about how to be, you know, targeted for, for neighborhoods that, and we're aware it's for said, it's just one of those things we're trying to get the low hand of fruit of. This is a countywide thing at the city, you know, each tool. It is insane, probably, just trying to start getting people on that as we know now additional.
And it works wherever you're at, finding you, that's sending you considerations.
Wonderful. Okay.
I'll make some remarks.
Can I ask a question with the fire that runs back behind you all day? There is no notification, obviously, so I'll tell you that. If you only get notification once it goes to a survey.
You do the big look category as you want. And you can turn them on and off, and that was a my first step.
Okay. Just curious, I said that from the end of chair, but yeah.
Yeah.
Because I want to notify this.
You know, box two. And then they got put in there. Yeah, that was threatening into our city and they this was was it.
Yeah, I just had a question about that. Kurt, is, is, is that, is that the same as the reverse 911? Code red.
I'm glad to hear, I don't know what to revert. The reverse 911 for me is completely different, so I'm not sure what you're referring to.
The, the one that you sign up with through dispatch, so that if there's a flood or fire, then you get.
It's all, it's the same thing now.
Thank you.
And I want to just touch on, I forgot to mention the name, Park Heritage Court. Remember, it's Lorna Kalash. I did not mean to pass over that, but that is who our Bellevue representatives. There are no other council meetings. So I'm going to move on to item number four. This is a presentation from Merrick Company around our water project staff support, and I have Christina Lesby on. Sorry?
I mean, let me, you, you thought open the guy in tomorrow?
Um, that is at the end of the table tonight. Okay. Christina, I would love for you to take over and present.
Yeah, so, um, so mayor, thank you and members of council and the community, thank you for having us here this evening. Mayor, I can't see from this angle, but are my two colleagues in the room, Chad and Catherine?
They are.
They are? Okay, perfect. Yeah, it's different tonight. Usually you guys have like that rotating camera, so I apologize. So first I'd like to introduce them, if they could just take a moment just to state their name and, and their role on the project, but you're going to be seeing quite a bit more of our, our project site manager and our project engineer working in the field, and they were there today, working alongside the public works director, Chris Johnson. So Chad and Catherine, if you want to go ahead and just stand up and say hello and introduce yourselves.
Chad Wilkes, American Company. Been around on the public property.
I'm Catherine Beister. I'm a level project engineer on the public. Seven.
And Christine, we also have Mr. John Stone with us as well.
John, yeah, John, introduce yourself as well, please.
I'm also with Mary's, I'll be assisting Chad. Glad to be here.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we felt that it was, that it would be really great for, for these folks to, to be there with you tonight, particularly mayor and members of council and others in the room, that you might, you might see these three running around, you know, on the property and, you know, doing a lot of the physical labor that, that's happening now as we get into the project further. And so we're really getting on a roll. So my presentation really tonight is just a presentation of some activities that we have been completed or that we've been completing to date for the past couple of months, as well as some projected activities that will be going on here during just the month of June. Some things to take in consideration. There's a lot of moving parts right now, and so members of council, you should have in your packets, I believe, a copy of a memorandum document that I sent over Friday, and I do apologize for that late, you know, sending of that document. I know we, we want to get these over to you on a monthly basis for, you know, a few days prior, so it's not a supplemental document. So I'm going to go ahead and just go through that. And then at the end, if members of council or mayor, if you have any questions or need any further clarification, we're happy to answer those questions. If they are engineering questions, again, I am not an engineer, I'm a government affairs consultant with Merrick, but Catherine there in the room is, is an engineer. If you have specific questions related to the project site or the infrastructure components, we've got Chad and John in the room tonight that can answer those very specific questions. So if you're agreeable, we'll just go ahead and roll through this. So what I've been hearing a lot of in attending the meetings, you know, virtually is that there, there's been, there's been, you know, some, not, not confusion, but some, some understanding that perhaps we, as an engineering firm, we're not being clear as to the status of the project, being more transparent and inclusive with you all in the room and the community on what activities we were performing. And really, a lot of the activities, as you all know, have been related to negotiations between the city and the landowner, and we've been a part of that. We haven't driven those activities, but certainly we have been a part of that. And so we just want to, moving forward, we want to be able to provide a clear status of where the project is at to date, what things have been completed to date in accordance with the engineer owner agreement between Merrick and the city, as well as the memorandum of understanding that was executed between the city and the landowner. We also want to help provide that transparency. We hear that a lot from the city council and the mayor, and we, we really celebrate along with the, with all of you that you're trying to further include, you know, the community and project stakeholders and the press and everybody in, into what's happening with this project, because it is a very large project. And then we also want to present ourselves to be able to resolve any questions that we're able to answer, you know, during these meetings and, and afterwards, if they do come up, surrounding any project activities and near future project activities. So really, that's kind of the purpose as to why we've decided to prepare this written memorandum. You all have a copy of it. And then for us to be able to present to you all during these public meetings. So activities completed from April 5th through June 5th are as follows. So we've had a lot of ongoing communication and coordination with the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality regarding the project schedule, the amended compliance agreement schedule, and the future state environmental review process, which is known as the SERP process, and other associated DEQ requirements. You have a public drinking water system. Obviously, the DEQ is very, very much involved in this project, and so there is continuous ongoing communication coordination with the regulatory entity. And, and they also are providing the funding for this project. So, so they are very closely involved in this project. I believe they were there this, this last in May at the city council meeting to provide further clarification on some of the communication that has gone on regarding most particularly the amended compliance agreement schedule. We've also been provided with, or we have, Merrick has provided a document called the Communication Memorandum to the city council on May 7th, and I believe you all had an opportunity to read through that. And really what that was, it was a written log of the detailed communications between DEQ regard and Merrick regarding the amended compliance agreement schedule. We've also, you know, given project status, status updates to the city council on both April 14th and May 12th public meetings, answered some questions related to the work that we've been performing. We also received a copy of the memorandum of understanding, the MOU, that was executed between the city and the landowner on April 29th, 2025. This memorandum is, is really foundational to the activities that we'll be talking about, that we have been performing, starting last week with one of our subconsultants, and then the work that my team who's in the room today provided and will be onsite for the rest of this week and the activities that will be performing throughout the month of June. Now, the, the MOU is very specific on what, what activities are allowed onsite for the property boundary survey and the topographic survey. Permission to access the landowner's property to conduct these activities to determine existing easements, existing facilities, the points of diversion, the existing pipelines, and the property boundaries has been granted through that executed MOU, and it is very, very specific. And we understand that we only have access to the landowner's property, meaning Merrick and our subconsult, subconsultants like Sawtooth Land Surveying. They have to be in accordance with the MOU, and it outlines everything very clearly. That does include prior written notice to the landowner and approval by the landowner before any of those activities can actually be performed during the month of June. And so, so we have been keeping the landowner in lockstep with, you know, the activities that we've been performing, the names of the individuals who have or will be accessing his property or near his property, and we've had great communication with the landowner, so we're very excited about that. We have also been performing coordination with and with our land surveyor, our subconsultant Sawtooth Land Surveying, otherwise known as Sawtooth, also regarding allowable onsite activities for the property boundary, boundary survey and the topographic survey during the month of June. And we have also finally had correspondence with the mayor and the public works director regarding survey activities and meeting coordination like tonight's meeting. So if we scroll down or we flip to, y'all flip to your second page there, you'll see some milestones and deliverables for the month of June only. Starting last week, Sawtooth did start performing the monumentation and property boundary survey by foot. It's been very specific that they are not to use any types of trucks or other vehicles on the landowner's property within the existing easement boundaries. Sawtooth has been instructed by Merrick to use a quote, "no trace approach" per the landowner's request. All of these have been approved by the landowner via email on June 2nd, and we've also had some subsequent coordination with him on Friday and then also today. Starting today, the city, I believe, just Chris Johnson from the city, I believe, Chris, and Merrick, so Catherine, John, and Chad, who are in the room tonight, they were onsite and will be onsite for the next couple of days, performing onsite water system evaluation by foot, again, not with trucks or other vehicles and utilizing GPS equipment to support transmission line location on the landowner's property within the existing easement boundaries and also using a no trace approach. Starting closer to the end of this week, Sawtooth is going to be gathering information on existing springs collection and existing transmission facilities to possibly relocate the existing transmission main within the right of way in Molden Canyon Road. Again, Sawtooth has been instructed by Merrick to use a no trace approach per the landowner's request. We do know that additional onsite activities and dates will likely be performed, and so we'll be communicating those with the landowner if those are required to receive the landowner's permission, obviously. And then, starting in June, kind of in the middle of the month, starting June 16th, the city and Merrick will work on identifying existing water system facilities. Again, using that no trace approach, we'll be performing some data collection services and discussing informational requirements for surveying activities with Sawtooth. And again, there may be additional onsite activities that may need to also be performed outside of that June 16th date, but we will communicate those very clearly with the landowner and receive written approval from him and his, his team prior to doing that. Finally, I just want to talk about some things kind of getting into motion here. So we have some longer term milestone deliverables and requirements, obviously. The whole reason that we're doing all of this work at this time is that, you know, we need to be able to to complete the land survey work, and we need to be able to produce a boundary survey that shows the points of diversion, the existing facilities, all property lines, and existing easement boundaries. This is a critical first deliverable. And so all of the activity that we're, we're going to be performing during the month of June really is to get to that deliverable, and that may take some time because we do know that yeah, you know, some of the monumentation work is, is pretty challenging because of, you know, the age of, of some of those landmarks. And so there is quite a bit of work that needs to be performed. But once we have that boundary survey completed, Sawtooth will then be able to prepare a topographic survey that includes features of interest and possible location of a transmission main, and we're going to be working alongside Sawtooth to develop associated maps for, for those surveys. And we'll be reviewing all of these documents, obviously, with the city, with the landowner, making sure that, that everybody is on the same page as to what the surveys state and, and what the next steps will be. And so we do anticipate that this work could take several weeks to complete, and so we will be updating the city on a regular basis on this work, and we'll have more to talk with the city about during July's meeting as to where those survey instruments are. I do also want to call out that it is likely that additional negotiations between the city of Bellevue and the landowner will, will likely be required to provide any future additional access for Merrick, our subconsultants, the city, the city's subconsultants to perform additional preliminary engineering investigations and studies. And this includes some of the required surveys through the state of Idaho, the wetlands, the cultural resource surveys, those are requirements from DEQ. The state environmental review process will be required. Once we figure out exactly, you know, where the transmission main will, will be performed, we've got to make sure that we conduct that very closely, that environmental reporting process with DEQ, and they may require other additional documentations and/or reports. So those things will likely need to be something that the city is kind of like looking forward to in, in the future here that may need to be renegotiated. So the city's attorneys, the landowner's attorneys would likely be involved because currently access to perform any of these either DEQ or other required milestones and produce those required deliverables are not included in this specific city and landowner MOU. It's my understanding from reviewing the MOU that it could be, that it can be amended by the city and the landowner, and so those will be things that we will keep the city and the landowner included in that conversation so that we can certainly see what other additional negotiations need to go on or any amendments to this MOU or the production of a new MOU to perform that work. So it is a, it's a lot. It's a pretty big process, but happy to be alongside of the city and the community to complete these activities. So that was quite a bit there. So why don't I pause? And if there are any questions, we'll go ahead and answer those to the best of our ability.
Questions, council for Christina.
Thanks for the presentation. This is Tom Bergen. And I was just wondering if Merrick or maybe more specifically if Sawtooth was aware that there is a two-foot contour map that goes from the city of Bellevue all the way out to the house, I believe, to the springs. The county, the county has that. And so when you talk about a topographic study, whether that would be of any value to Sawtooth or to you and maybe financially to the city have that topographic data already produced, it could be incorporated into your work along with the existence of that.
Yeah, that, that's a great, that's a great question. And Catherine, can I swing that question over to you? I believe you all are, have reviewed the historic documents, but could you address that?
Hi, everyone. So the county GIS data without existing elevations is important for us to tie in. It does not include, that I'm aware of the existing facilities, the existing facilities need to be tied in precisely with that elevation. So that's certainly something that the surveyors will look into, but we need a little bit more precise information with the existing facilities.
Yeah, and I can understand that it probably doesn't include existing facilities for the part of the topographic survey and public data. And mine is valuable too, so it's not.
Thank you.
Susan?
I was, more than anything, just kind of wondering where we are, specific to the projects that were part of this alternative. Specifically, the last time you guys gave us an update, there were material changes to the SASS-1, right? We're no longer moving the spring. There were some benefits that were noted as part of that process that were supposed to be covered in that. I'm kind of wondering how, what are the benefits we're still trying to get from the work that's, that's being done? What are we still expecting to have come out of this? We already, we found out, you guys said that we already have the expected water supply that we thought the project was going to increase, right? Down the rate was 3.3 or something. And it doesn't sound like that we're necessarily going to eliminate the aging collecting system, collection system, but maybe that is still part of it without things being removed. So I'm just kind of wondering, against the project that was there, what pieces still are there? And where do we learn how that cost may or may not have changed and, and what we should be expecting to get out of that now? Does that make sense based on that?
It does. Yes, it does make sense. And so the project does consist of five kind of larger components. The Siemens Creek New Springs Collection System, which essentially, yes, you're correct, we're not going to be, you know, changing anything. It, it appears anything about the collection system because of the city's water, current existing water right. And Chris could speak more to that if. And Chris could speak more to that if if he would like, or Chad or Catherine. So, but there are. There are modifications that do need to happen to the collection system in accordance with the amended. Compliance agreement schedule, just because. Of some of the things I believe Cassandra Lemmons and her team reported to the city. And that the city understands the reason that y'all are under the compliance schedule right now is because. Of the exposure of those springs to. To outward entities, whether that's, you know, bugs, birds, other pollutants, things like that. And so there are. Adjustments that do need to be made to that current collection system. The second portion of the project is the collection transmission reconstruction. Which is is part of this investigation. The Highway seventy-five improvements, only phase one, it's a very small portion. There's number four, the distribution system investigation, and number five, the Siemens Creek Springs land purchase and easements. It sounds like we don't need to be doing any sort of land purchase because we're going to be. Remaining within the existing collection system site. But this work that we're doing right now, this easement work is critical for both the city to understand what. What is within its legal. Right to access, to operate and to maintain as well as making that very clear distinction for the landowner as well. And so. So the work that we are doing right now. Just so everybody in the room is very clear, is is like the critical components. We have to understand what does the city have. In place right now legally as far as ownership, access. Which is the long term access for operation and maintenance and just distinguishing that for the landowner as well. So I don't know, Chris, if you have any additional comments on that or Catherine or Chad that you would like to add.
Hey, we. The survey will tell us what additional steps that we'll need to take, what what. Additional findings we need to do for watershed, for environmental impact. Archaeological study, anything like that. So until we know the easement boundaries that we're working in. It's hard to develop a plan of work on the other steps. So once we identify these areas. We'll identify the additional steps that are going to need to be taken. And we have to work within our water right, which allows us basically ten acres around. The pointed diversion or or ten acres around the easement. We can adjust a little bit, but after that, it will. Require us to do amendment to our water right and we are going to avoid that at all costs because. We don't want to have the timestamp bar, water rights change, and we don't want to negate our water right. So this is a preliminary study that gets us all the data information we can. To identify our easements, the path line of the the current main line and then the. Post transmission line. Because it may have to follow the same path or we would like to bring it up on the road so we have better way of way in access to it. With the property owner as much as we can. Once we have that information and we start developing a plan, we can start developing the timelines of developing. These additional assessments and that's certainly the plan on where the construction site is going to be. And the timeline. So that's going to look at how it falls in to the priorities that we requested. As far as the volume of the project.
So I think Suzanne is specifically referring to, from what I understand from the five points of the project, that. If we go one through five, one has been eliminated because we determined we're not moving the spring election site, correct?
Well, part of, part of one.
Part of one.
Yeah, and mostly what I'm just suggesting is this one page, this SS one, if you redumbered it or what have you. It's just the high level that we see references to correcting identified efficiencies. There could be just a replacement page for this.
Yeah, I just finished my statement. Yes. And then she's referring to the one that starts with an L that has to do with the land access number five. We're referring to Christina. Which we talked about eliminating the purchase side of it, but we're still very much doing work on the easement side. And I think there's been questions of at what point will we be able to identify the potential cost savings? And or, you know, what that would look like from a financial standpoint. And it is my understanding that we, after this potential initial survey work, we might be able to revisit. Scope of project, cost of project, and maybe revise those bullet points of what the project entails. Is that a correct assumption?
That is, that's a very, it's a correct statement. So yes, as part of the preliminary design, once this. Once the survey, the surveys are complete. And the city and the landowner are agreeable in every aspect of those. Those documents and all of that work has been completed, that's when we're going to be able to really identify. This is the project. This is where we're either going to. Upgrade and and replace the, say, the transmission main where it is right now, or we're going to move it. Because the city and the landowner are in agreement that that is the best long term solution moving forward. And we will be able to understand what the cost estimates are. Included in each of those alternatives, essentially. And so we're going to be able to take, so really, if y'all remember this, the facility plan is kind of this. This very, it it gives a very in-depth look at the existing. Public water system, right? It goes through all of the historical documents. It brings all of that. Together and it memorializes everything that is, that is. In fact, going or is part of your drinking water system. You know, the age, the material composition, the flows, the water rights, all of those things, right? And then you look at it and you have to then. Review what what are some of the issues? What are some of the problems? And one of the largest problems. That was determined through this process. You know, and obviously a part of the the compliance agreement scheduled between the city and DEQ. Is that the right to access and the right and the. The infrastructure as is right now, particularly with the springs. Where they're located and and the really the openness to potential contamination, those were some big problems. That needed resolution. And so those are included in the facility plan. And in the facility plan, what was stated was that the city could look at. All of these different projects that could bring the city back into compliance with. Public drinking water standards through the state of Idaho. These are some long term solutions. Here are some other things that you all wanted to do. And the city. What they selected, what you all selected, were these five components of this project. Now, as we're taking a deeper dive, we can actually understand what. What those boundaries look like, what each of the distinct points of diversion are. In fact. This this work right now that is being performed by Sawtooth. By the city, by Merrick, is critical to really identifying the key components. Moving forward into those distinct five components of the project. And so once we're complete with that, probably by the end of the summer, we're going to be able to come to you all and say. Here are all of the additional facts related to the property, the boundaries, the points of diversion, et cetera. This now is is likely a good solution. Would you like to move forward with this? Either a new springs collection or. You know, an amended existing springs collection. And here's the cost and here's the timeframe. For each of those projects. And you all can make decisions related to that. So yes, Merrick, very long-winded answer on my part, I apologize, but we. This this work right now is is basically the the critical work that will help us all. Be able to understand what those costs, what the schedule, what the timeline. For completing these projects will be.
I keep hearing the word possibly regarding the transmission line moving so far. And again. There's no misunderstanding that the work that you're doing right now, the surveying and all of that is important. That's that's not an issue, right? It's it's when you say transparency, transparency needs details, right? So. And so in that, there's really just trying to drill down so we understand what's going on. And there have been. You know, miraculous things accomplished with no access and changing what some of our understandings are. But we were complicit in moving forward with, you know, a nine million dollar bond. You know, that nobody held a gun to our head. But now as I look at these things, there's a lot of uncertainty. We've got. Prices that are associated with things that may or may not be true. And or accurate or necessary, and that's part of the process. But now, these these two really are biggest things, right? Supposedly, we're moving the springs because there we need to get all our water and and we felt that's not necessarily true, even without getting on the property. And now we're talking about possibly it's not going to work to move the transmission line. So. Understanding that these are findings that happen in the fields that you all are out there doing. How are we keeping up with this and at some point, where are we going to get to? What happens if we don't move that transmission line? Is there really a possibility in this? It should be talking about it as as possible. This this was considered an essential part because of previous agreements with the landowner. So some of these things have gotten increasingly vague. People are saying possible. There's another MOU. It took us a year. Potentially, it took us a year to get to this. So I want to make sure we're staying on top of heading off anything that takes us out of the summer. Getting out to the end of the summer without really knowing. Those delays, any of those. Property, very important misunderstandings and. And that's why I'd like to see some of these things at least updated to. Include, it's no longer relevant to moving the springs. However, we do need to reduce the possibility of contamination. That was one of the benefits of, you know, the elimination. Or at least, I guess, is what I'm asking. So I'm going to fill that first really quickly, right?
I think a lot of the, a lot of what. Has been and is being clarified ties a lot to the easement. And marking the easement and understanding the boundaries of that easement. That is what has clarified a lot of them. Why parts of the project could potentially shift. The word use of possibly. Is very relevant because without a lot of the surveying information. It it is yet to be determined if the best use of funds, the best use of. What's necessary is to move the transmission line or not. So that, unless I'm wrong versus. Public Works Director, that is where that possibly is coming in. That will be determined through surveying and the best use of the city funds, the best use. Of location materials and all of that. So. To press anything to answer that, I just want to make sure that. That the vague, the vagueness of what you're looking to is is not seen as deceptive in any way. It's. It's truly, we're looking at all of the best case scenarios with within the easement rights that we have.
Well, do not see it as deceptive. I see it as the mandate for transparency, like for the details, for keeping people apprised. And the better informing, a lot of people voted for the bond as a mirror.
And just the clarification was a seven million.
Seven million dollar bond, sorry, sorry. So, but anyway. People voted for this thinking that it was a done deal, a free shot, and I think we need to.
And so without having to keep kind of circular discussion on this, I think the intention here is that we will continue to have updates from Merrick. We will continue to have information. The surveying data will very much reveal a lot of the next steps of this part of the project. And Merrick is committed alongside of the city, myself as the mayor and our public works director. To bring that information to council as timely as possible. And even if the surveys aren't done, we will still have another update from Merrick to just kind of keep you apprised of the process. So I would say at this time. We need the surveys to get more of what you're asking for, and I think they're great questions, but let's just. Continue to keep it in the scope of this is the next step and what will come is a lot of those answers.
But one final question, then. You keep referring to Sawtooth as a a subconsultant. Is that a differentiating statement from a subcontractor which may or may not fall under bidding and RFP rules with for DEQ for the. For our funding and things like that? Is there a reason you use that term versus contractors? They seem to be getting a reasonable amount of work. Did we have an RFP for them or is that part of this process?
There was no RFP, no. It it's very typical for engineering firms to. To hire the subconsultants that that specialize in this work. Merrick has survey. You know. Excuse me, we we have professional surveyors, but we work with Sawtooth and they are. Much less expensive, first of all. We work with them for over a decade. They do great work. They are able to mobilize a lot more efficiently. Than than our surveyors that would come out of Denver, Colorado. So.
Hey, let me interject there. So. This is a team that they brought on. The RFP was awarded to Merrick. So the RFP did happen. The way they do their scope of work and the people they bring on to support the work that they need to do falls under. What the RFP that they proposed. So a second RFP to identify a surveyor for the engineering firm that went through a RFP is not needed. It's already been established through the initial RFP. And Merrick has the right to choose whoever they want to come on to assist them. Next RFP will be for. Construction. We have to put out the bids and that will be done to the competitive bidding process. It'll be. Advertised notice and put out. People have an opportunity to put in their bids. So right now, everything's falling under the RFP through Merrick. Whoever else they need to hire to get the work done, they need.
So that subcontractor versus subcontractor, David, when we discuss these things, that makes sense.
You just referred to them as subconsultants. I think it's homuncleature.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, well. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time, Christina, and representing for being in here. I look forward to. The next update and or presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
We will be moving on to item number five, our consent agenda. Within the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes from May twelve. Approval of planes, May twenty eighth through June ninth, twenty five, and our department reports. Does council have any questions or items of discussion within September?
I I have some questions about our our cables. And the first one is for association divided cities. For for the dues, I guess the registration fee. Is that just one training meeting or is that? Okay, and is that just for one trust to attend to?
Yeah, that's mine.
Anything else I can place? I would like to commend Amy on fifteen pages of minutes for that four hour meeting because. Sitting through it was business rough and having to sit through twice is. I I appreciate, appreciate that very much. Good effort, Amy. Thank you.
I wanted to get an update on behalf of some residents about the. For ongoing water issue in parts of first, some residents of Chancero. I know you're working on it, Chris, but. Would be helpful to have an update because I think. It just took a little work. I I don't, they need some more information.
So is there a specific question to the department head of work?
Yes, because it says there's no problems currently and all the issues have been resolved in Chancero. Yes, because it says there's no problems currently and all the issues have been resolved in Shattrow.
Okay, so let's pose it as a question in reference to the department head report.
To the department head report, I'm sorry.
I want to say that I think the uh. The well is back, hundred percent operation. We're continuing to do some investigations. We found out uh, with the well going down that we're not getting the water from our down to uh, Shattrow subdivision. We're only getting about twenty-five PSI, which should be up around a hundred from uh. This spring in ten tank. Uh, currently Shattrow was running. Uh, we changed the way it operates before with stuff on a certain horsepower, so it stayed within the range of this. Um, with some changes that we made the other weekend, I changed it so it stays within a pressure range of. Eighty-two to seventy-nine PSI, so it maintains more constant pressure. So as more people start using water, it ramps up the RPMs of the motor and continues to deliver that amount of pressure. Um, so the other thing is just investigating. We believe that there's a valve somewhere in the system that either got shut during the car loan. Or at some other points, somebody shut a valve and it didn't reopen. So we're not getting the flow down there. We developed a map, we're basically starting up the, or east corner from car loan and working down through the system. Um, cleaning, exercising about some of the challenge with that. I don't even know the last time these valves have been linger exercise. So we have these, you know, seven foot holes that could be three foot, four hundred rock. And so some of those we have to identify and I'm going to have to get our back truck or in the valve exercising failure. Which has a smaller diameter vacuum to suck them out. Be able to see where the valves are and if they're closed. Uh, it's part of our asset management plan that we're developing is to go through the entire city, not all the valves. But we'll be starting up that part of the section of Shattrow. Identify why we're not getting pressure because honestly, right now, if we have power outage and the well goes down, um, we're going to have some serious concern with the water pressure. Will pop in forty PSI, so we want to get it at that before the issue and before we have to put it in January. So it's ongoing. Um, it's what we're focused on, focused on this weekend, next week.
Is it possible, does anything to do with? Um, the work that we had to do on the spring valve up here since they were also affected by that?
Everything I got to pick it up here, the valve replacement was up on the bench from uh, the new Stray Horns. Yeah, Stray Horn, Cow Catcher, Cow Catcher, um, across the park side, um, Sunrise Ranch, over to Morgan County. Those were the primary residents that were infected with pressure loss. Um, I have to drain. Um, the chest well was only keeping up with about sixty-five PSI. And they were up on the bench, they're only getting thirty-five PSI. Now it's back to everybody's getting about sixty-five, having secondary issues other than sprinklers aren't working. But that's been a long thing for the last five, ten years. Until. Until I identify what's going on with the valve situation in Shattrow, operating on the well, we keep it at that sustained PSI.
Um, okay. Uh, thank you. And then I, I also about the public works department for something that I wanted to ask for the future, not for now. And not for us, any members now, but we do get a lot of metrics and verifiable concrete facts from the submissions of some of the other departments. And I wanted to suggest that it would be helpful if in the, in the report that you do give, when you discuss that. Alley's or the patients have been, they're receiving or signs, the training courses have been taken. That including details about that helps us better know the progress, our staff would be trained and. Also helps us rather than it all filtering back to you when people ask us, hey, what's happening? They sort of even makes a comment. I, I thought the scientific were changed on Vine Street, I don't know if they have. But um, it would be helpful to have the tail of, of the line, you know, the items that you um.
Understood, all's work on it, it's just uh, priorities keeping the water and the wastewater moving right now. Then with the ability that I have to write these reports and we are working to get more admin assistance tracking. So I will keep a group reports.
Thank you.
May I ask, um, for it, it looks like we'd be down and off soon. I mean, what does it take to replace that first thing, baby?
Well, actually discussing this specifically.
All right.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
It's um, between selection and training and working with. For a new person over a year.
And ideally through your staff. We were to be fully staffed. Another question, okay.
I've got a beautiful presentation for you.
Oh, that's my, that's not about my, yeah, I've got the project. They took one, two, and three.
Yeah, don't forget me every morning.
I almost totally took up your time now, but. No, I'll set it in a while, I do agree.
Good luck to you.
Any other questions on it?
I, I did have one question uh, for Chris. Um, uh, I did pay a visit to one of my neighbors on Saturday afternoon. Uh, right across the street from the well down in Shattrow. And um, was able to observe firsthand um, what, what his dilemma was with the lack of water pressure that they're experiencing at their. Property and, and, and they're, they're not getting enough water pressure to pop the sprinkler head up out of the ground. And if he, he went over to it manually and pulled it up, and as soon as he pulled it up. Like the six other stations feeding at that same zone all popped up and started watering. And obviously that's not something that is um, easy to do at three o'clock in the morning. You have to go around and babysit those areas. And so I'm wondering if it might be possible to, to do a spot check at that location and see if there's something.
I can't remember, I could go to eighty percent of the houses. Town right now, that's the situation, my house included. Ever since the meters went in, um, I've had to go around and like. Have people that are already switching over to lower pressure newer models. Um, you got to think about the installation date, uh, when did these sprinklers just go in? Um, what has changed from this? If they do wear out, you can calcium, they can calcium, they get wrong. So there are many things other than this pressure, but um, it's common occurrence. I understand it's frustrating for everybody. Uh, my recommendation right now is as you run over a sprinkler head or hit one on a lawnmower, change it out with a, a lower pressure. One, start to break your system because I don't believe that it's. All a pressure issue. Um, I've got to say pressures at the hydrants in, in different places, I'm checking around these neighborhoods. And down there, it's eighty-five, but up here at sixty-five. I have a hard time feeling sad, eighty-five PSI. And again, remember that our water system, the priority is fire suppression. Second is public health and safety for sanitary consumption. And then, yeah, if they have some water left over, they can water them off, but great.
I just wanted to, um, I, I, I told these residents that I would, I would.
Allow us to investigate, hopefully if we can figure out the spill situation and it'll prove the pressure throughout all of Shattrow. Just, I do not understand how the house second from well, it's not giving, it's not the pressure. It's the houses that are in good, so.
To say how much I love the colors of the um. Building permit report, um, charts and um, and I um, think that a lot of the documentation that you put in together is um. Uh, wonderful. Um, I did also wonder um. About how these, these numbers and statistics are, you know, that are actually being used. And what you thought or what your goals are, how we learn these things, you know, what your goals are for. Um, you know, I, I believe this review and inspection activity is part of your code enforcement and such, just. And so what your goals are for, um. You know, how you're using these charts as well as when you produce a document like this. Um, what now for all of the things that may or may not be outside of this current? Is there, you produce something like this, is there also part of your plan from that, that you recognize you've got to? Okay, holy crap, we've published it, it applies to everybody going forward. What about all the things? But you know, what do we do to make sure there's parity?
Uh, so that's your question on the building permit activity reports first. Uh. Tent is really good for you guys on what's happening, documents, customer service metrics, potentially allow for some. Uh, understanding of perfect forecasting, future with the building for good activity. Other things that, you know, that was the first attempt, I'm happy to follow up with you guys on why. Other major more information. For you guys to make sure that it's something that is valuable to you as well. Uh, then on the residential building guide, it is a living document. I expect that after it gets used, if you guys look at a few more, what about this thing, what about this? Get some, how do I handle this situation? Um, and then. Everything that's in there is already active in code and it's. Moving forward to enforce that, that's.
Uh, no, so, so basically they're the same, we did a little thing, uh, got this looking good. Well, it's not necessarily. Right, well, I think it looks, it looks great. Thank you.
Second. Does that say?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Item number six, executive session, uh, upper executive session, so in item code seventy-four dash two zero six.
I would move to. Go into with that the obsession, I think about seventy-four dash two oh six, item F. Item F reads as follows, to communicate with legal counsel or the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of. And legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but imminent and likely to be. Litigate. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Is that this time that I'll ask? Yeah, so we're ready, we'll call you back, thank you. Yeah, Sean, we're going to give you a call, what, um, can we call you personal phone, city phone, what's your preference?
Uh, city phone.
Perfect, all right.
Let me turn on.
Call. Uh, we just came out of executive session, on the way back to order. Moving on to item number seven, um, discussion regarding a post ordinance of many W city code title breach chapter five. Mobile food vendors to expand mobile vendor licensing to include non-related businesses.
Noting, I understand, I didn't hear that there, this is not an action, I didn't.
It is not a discussion, it's a discussion. Um, and so, um, but the intention of this is to uh. Expand the current ordinance that was centered around mobile food vendors, food trucks. And expand it to include um, all mobile vendor licensing and permitting. Um, and it's to look at regulating mobile vending um. Fairly across all categories. Um, so I hope we've all had time to kind of read through it and. Would like to open it up to a little discussion, ask department heads, um, in particular clerk and community development director. Um, in regards to any questions you have, if this is something you are interested in, continue to pursue. Um, uh, and just kind of a general discussion about this. And I'm, I'm Marshall as well, if there's any questions in regards to this.
I would like to potentially, first of all, I think it's spot on that we're trying to address this issue. Um, because you know, whether you want to call it a broken window or not, it's important that we address the things that are happening up, up front. Um, I think that there, uh, I'd be very interested in knowing. The, the zoning rules that currently should apply um, to conducting commerce in parking spaces on private property. And what there is currently to um, have the property owners enforce or not. I can't imagine, say, if to have built businesses and in the parking spaces, but maybe that's an approved use or maybe it's a use that needs to be identified. No, it's not true, but anyway. So, so I think on a broader scope, that what we're seeing, if we have things that address it at that level as well as looking at improving. Um, our zoning to make sure that we're not opening up these opportunities for, for um. You know, very transient, you know, summer businesses. I don't know that we've, I, I think we need to gather input from our, our existing merchants as to the app, um, impact. And I think um, making sure, I, I don't know that even this um, current permit would be robust enough. Um, to necessarily, uh, like, you know, if, if, I guess I'm not really sure, like, is it meant to dissuade the businesses? It's meant to obviously, um, uh. I just think potentially we're opening it up to businesses that actually meet the definition and that we've created something that um, we really don't want. Which is all these things in parking spaces.
So, so back into like your first question, you were asking a zoning issue. Brian, I think you're probably the best guy to.
Being development director, um, there is currently nothing in title ten relating to temporary mobile vendors. Um, it would be a little unusual, it's not totally um. Um, called or heard of to uh, regulate temporary businesses through zoning, but typically zoning more for permanent things. And then business licensing handled more of the temporary nature items. Uh, but yeah, currently there is no um. Zoning regulations on temporary.
But aren't there zoning regulations that say you have to have a certain number of parking places?
Correct. And when we currently get a business license for a food truck or some, along those lines, there is a slot for how many parking spaces are occupied.
Oh, for using that space. You can designate those parking spaces not for parking, but for covered? Or did I get the, what you said?
Uh, so you know, instead of the primary business on the sites, a restaurant or something along those lines, there is a. Minimum number of parking spaces typically, you know, one per five hundred square feet is kind of our standard for most things. Uh, that that business must provide. Uh, then anything over that, there's flexibility, a lot of time gets used in winter for snow storage, uh, that sort of thing.
There, there's a formula. Okay, by use, but there is a formula which probably isn't, okay, so that was, that was nothing like.
And the whole parking thing, but people using their properties though, for parking, we don't have. A provision on like, you know, for example, like, and then I called in about that person using that lot. And cow catcher, because there's not like, what did you say, an ordinance for, you have to have a driveway or?
Yeah, there's no prohibition on parking on enveloped or enveloped slots.
But that wouldn't be within the realm.
Probably not.
Yeah.
Typically there, all inmates are even. How do you distinguish this from a yard sale? Do they have to get licensed to have a yard sale?
Or eliminated. Or eliminated stand.
Oh, there you go.
It's not over a certain amount of days.
It's not over a certain amount of days, I thought.
Or hours.
Well, let's, I mean, let's go back to the zone, I mean, in this organ, in this mobile food vendor ordinance, didn't that. Aren't we talking about the business zone here? So, we're talking about the business zone and oftentimes, correctly, lemonade stands happen residential.
Very good.
Oftentimes yard sales happen in residential.
Good to cut down on the egg sale.
Okay, so, well, you know, I think the focus is in the business zone.
Okay.
Um, and I think that, that would be the differentiation.
What, what type of businesses did you do, does anyone think might, I, I believe most of the businesses that we're seeing now will qualify probably. Or something like this, um.
Potentially may, potentially may not, we're talking, you know, I've seen, uh. Wood carvings of bears, I've seen, um.
Hello Kitty t-shirts.
Fire, Hello Kitty t-shirts, I've seen, uh, fruit, um, I've seen it varying degrees.
Cowboy hats.
Goods, cowboy hat, things of the sort.
So would we be, are we hopeful then that some of them will qualify and that we start filling up, um, our. Private parking with, with Hello Kitty and, and these, I'm just, I'm just.
No, I think that the, the intention here is to confirm that they qualify, um, and make sure that they are properly permitted.
And, and then they have permission.
And they have permission.
On the private property to, to be doing this. I, I, I can tell you historically, this, this has been a problem. And, uh, primarily we have our mom and shop, mom and pop shops. That are complaining about the guys coming up with the fruit stand and taking away their.
Sure.
Their sales of their brick and mortar business and so, um, the, the, the intent of this is to regulate it in some fashion. So that there is, um, a permit that needs to be acquired, they understand the rules, they have permission. And can demonstrate that to city, um, that they have permission to be on that property to operate that business. Um, hours of, of business, um, opening, uh.
Time limits, health setting, health insurance.
Yeah, yeah, so what happens, um, I'm just curious, if, if the, if the property owner has given permission for these businesses to be there. And. Is the property owner, he's, who's leasing a property, is it, are these kind of leases, is this like sort of a lease from the private? I'm just curious, how that.
Or they just say for these businesses, just like, you know, or maybe they don't know.
So the city comes into play with the permitting is the confirmation of permission from the. Uh, landowner and appropriate, uh, licensing with the state with the health. Department and insurance, so that's where the city comes in and then I think the, you know, the burden would be on the landowner then to determine if that. Is a, you know, is a business use they'd like to see with the parking lot and what level of insurance they would require for that person to have that space. Sean, do you have your hand up to speak for you?
I'm sorry.
I couldn't tell if you had your hand up to say something or not.
Oh, I'm talking with my wife.
Okay. Not a problem, just confirming, I didn't want to let you out of the conversation.
No, no, I'm just listening.
Thank you.
Things all good.
So I, so again, I'm a huge fan of discussing this, but let's just say we end up now, I mean, people are very impressed. And the next thing we know, you know, something's not going well, the next thing we know, we've got every other sparking parking spot. Has met the criteria and is licensed, so people all have. You know, mangoes, Hello Kitty. Oranges, Hello Kitty, you know, and all this, and is that, is there some way we can, are we looking to, I don't think that's what we want. And, and so I'm wondering. Are we, should we be looking broader to say, we're just not sponsoring the sale, uh, we just don't have a sale of parking lots. Without these very explicit, I think the food trucks are actually.
Like mobile vendors would also qualify for, we wanted a farmer's market, that would be the same thing under the, that if we wanted to like, you know, maybe then it's a space. For someone, then just give somebody an opportunity to be like, hey, we're starting a farmer's market, hey mango guy. There's back to me an opportunity. In the different space rather than parking lot, but rather having something there rather, you know. Looking down where you have.
No, I like it, so, but it's, so I'm wondering, so we wouldn't be currently without what being proposed, be able to say run over the park. You would say, hey, we're doing the chili cook off on your own lot, we're having chili off and everybody's got a, on the lot fifty bucks, you can be part of the chili. Or we're having a farmer's market, would we be able to rent that, that space specific to that event or? Have, is it, is it something maybe that there's, there's a different system or something like that versus?
Well, if it was in the park, you, that person's ever wanted to do that.
And let's focus on the, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I, I know you're trying to do.
I hear what you're saying.
Well, it doesn't say in there, this is, this is a main location, so.
Okay, so then, sorry, we might doubt that, but the mobile food vendor one, if any preference went wrong, have that in there or did not have that in there?
Or if that went in there?
I like the idea, I would just like to see us get some more feedback, um. From the, like you're saying, thing for the local businesses, because we haven't done much to support our existing businesses. As we've gotten started, here's my, why not, we'll support our existing businesses.
This came out with the feedback.
But they wanted that.
That this year had a feedback from local businesses, all of it.
Um, alright.
The feedback was, I swear to God.
The feedback was that they wanted a regulation around permitting of businesses in. Parking, in, in private parking lots that weren't food trucks that currently were, uh, under our ordinance.
Maybe that we're not trying to limit it, maybe we're just trying to. Regulate it.
Exactly, it's sort of wild, it's right, oh, we just want to regulate, my sense is they probably would say, well, we don't really. Uh, we sell awareness and we don't want.
I think what we're trying to accomplish is. If they are already doing it. But they're not permitted to do it. Now they get a permit, so they can say, we can tell our brick and mortar buildings and say, okay, now these people have to have a permit to operate. And so it just changes it from just solely being food trucks to any items, we're not, we're not regulating what can and cannot be sold, it's on. Who wants to apply for a license, so we can say yes or no, you meet criteria or not. It's something we're all thinking.
One of the big ones for me is the fact that. It's requiring them to get permission and give us the main phone number of the property owner. So that we can confirm said permission. Because as it is now, if somebody wants to park in the parking lot, there's not a lot we can do.
Really, I think, you know, a lot of it comes down to the Marshall's ability to regulate.
Do they have business licenses now, just simply business licenses? It's what it sounds like. But I mean, even just like I have an LLC or I file taxes, isn't that sufficient to say, hey, you can't be vending, I don't care where you are. You don't have a license, even just a basic business license. So if you wanted it to the business zone, then, um, you're removing. The potential for perhaps farmer's markets somewhere at the park or whatever it would be to the business.
Question on that though, I mean, given the, we do have special events permits of the sort, and I think that's a farmer's market then be constituted, you know, considered under a special. And that would be something, because it's not necessarily, it's, it's an event, one is individual local vendors, but that's.
So would you want to talk about an exception for somebody who has a special event apartment, uh, same place in the same apartment?
I mean, this, you could look at something like our Labor Day, our Labor Day event is riddled with mobile vendors and that's a special event.
I know, I was. That's not in business.
And they are required for that one day event to get this permit. Uh, the mobile food vendor event this time, that's nothing special.
So to, to Tom's question, did you get the sense from your queries and response that the existing vendors are. Would like to limit this kind of product, that was their interest in regulation or simply?
I think we discussed a lot at this council equal application of the law, and I think that is being here, it's equal, equal application of the. Permitting.
They're required to have health inspections and. All, all types of licensing and insurance, insurance and, you know, whatnot. And so they just wanted to make sure that the wood sculptures and the Hello Kitty. Stuff and whatever other merch is. Popping up out there is regulated somehow, they have to be regulated some, they, everybody should be regulated.
I totally agree, so we think that this is sufficient for, these aren't things that just fell off somebody else's truck and it's sold there, like this, this. Covers a lot of that too, and I'm not seeing any tax or anything, but then somebody that disappeared. That's the gist, right?
We don't collect any tax for it, we don't, none of, in terms of. Then collecting sales taxes between the business and state, um, you know, collecting sales taxes from. Mobile vendors this time. Any of our messages, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I thought state, we don't get a part of the state tax.
We get, there's a formula on how it, how it's.
Well, yeah, okay, yeah. That's, anyway, so yeah, okay.
I see what you're saying.
Well, I, I think it's definitely going in the right direction, this might, especially since you already collected information from the people. At least some of the people who were very effective, which is the businesses. We also think residents, you know, I don't. You know, I think we've all been in departments that are, you know, you lose access to your sidewalk and there's a lot of, uh. You know, bending. We got a little.
So Mary, are you, are you looking for some direction, that was in terms of food, are, are we interested in. Refining this ordinance and, and putting a public hearing in place, is that what you're asking?
Yes, I am asking for some feedback.
Yeah, equity with the brick and mortar is the goal.
So would you rather see non-food truck vendors not being permitted?
I add here, it's supposed to be, it's not permitted, this is only for, or something else, it's permitted. It's find the address for the owner and it's not, it's not there to say, but, but they did, they're not permitted, they should be there.
Does that create an enforcement nightmare, well, regardless of it, if it does or doesn't, I mean, I, I, I think that's a valid point, definitely.
I mean, I don't, I don't know how prevalent this will become, it seems like with this, it could become more prevalent, but. How prevalent it is today that we could identify. A business owner or a landowner and say, yeah, that's fair a lot, that vendor shouldn't be there. Two weeks or something to.
And they always come in on a Friday night and leave on Sunday afternoon.
Well, I, I mean, fair enough, there's, there are enforcement issues, but. This strikes me as opening the door as opposed to, and, and creating maybe some greater inequity that we're bringing over before.
But I guess I would have to counter to that, there's not really space for other opportunities for brick and mortar within our town, which are like artists or. People who build bears or things like that, opportunities for them to. Sell goods because there's no space for them to afford to sell those items, because breaking mortar and commercial.
So who wants to bring it forward? Is, is that, I think I've already asked that question.
Nothing. No, I don't do so. Well, yeah, but I mean, right now, this is a, is not an action item, so it's just for discussion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But at some point, we need to develop something, if it's an ordinance saying absolutely no, then we need to develop said ordinance.
Well, you're gonna be a fireworks guy. Well.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is we, um, we either, we either need to pursue an ordinance that prohibits or, um. Continue down this path and tighten it up further. So I think I'm going to take this back with staff and revisit it, um, with the department heads, the appropriate department heads. And I welcome any more feedback confirmation in the process, but, um, I'm glad we had the discussion, I took, I took. Fair amount of notes here and I think department heads, um, heard the discussion around it. Okay, no further discussion, I think we'll move on to the next topic.
I agree.
Thanks, thank you for your time on that, moving on to item eight, new business. Um, item A, consideration of an encroachment permit application submitted by KV Twin Falls with installation. Of a natural, uh, natural gas for four, four twenty North Sixth Street. This is coming from Public Works, Chris Johnson, if you'd like to present.
Chris Johnson, Public Works, uh, this encroachment permit for intermountain gas at the four twenty North Sixth Street. Um, it's an installation of a gas line to a private residence. A no fee will be charged for this permit as per the franchise agreement, um, review the franchise agreement. And it specifically states in section two, use of streets and rules of government saving, um. Grantee shall secure permit for any opening. It shall make in the streets, alleys or public places in the city and shall be subject to applicable ordinances, but no fee shall be required of the grantee for such, for such permit. It's fairly simple, a resident needs a gas line, they're gonna be blocking off, uh, they'll have some traffic control that was in your packet. Installation of the gas line and pick up their stuff and get out.
Uh, I'm, it's seventy-nine on the map there, it looks like they've already aligned it across this, um, Sixth Street, and this is just an extension into the lot. It's a solid line going across Sixth Street and the dash line, it could be from a stub or something, it's already there. And, and maybe my only question, I guess, related to that is, are, are they gonna have to cross the street in order to install this or, or no, we just find the stub and they connect?
I believe it's just the stub on this one, uh, they're not requesting any, um, um, boring or road, uh, replacement, so. Apologize, this is my first one on a gas line, um. So it's fairly new.
That was how I drew that map, if there was a stub there already, it wouldn't require.
It, it, from what I understand, it's just a connection, there's an already existing, um, point to connect to, but it needs to go from that point to connect into the house.
Any further questions? Or just on this one?
With standard, no fee, should take a day.
This is only with our franchise agreement with, uh, um, Intermountain Gas, um, due to that agreement, their fees get waived.
Well, section two, yeah, that was just trying to make sure I get it on.
So then, a, a question from me is, is, are, are all of these something that the council has to approve or is this something that Public Works?
Until we adjust the ordinance, our ordinance says the council will review all utilities. Um, so the council, couple of last month, they approved to adjust the resolution. That allows Public Works to do encroachments, permits for driveways and. What's the other private streets? Private streets, but we've left in there, um, utilities. It would be my preference, and me and Brian could review the packets and agree that. All the safety things are there, they have their site maps, our biggest concern is they fill out the permit fully, if they don't fill out the permit fully. Return the permit to them, tell them what they need to fill out, and then, um, once they have it all filled out, it meets our. turn the permit to them, tell them what they need to fill out, and then, um, once they have it all filled out, it meets our safety requirements. It's not gonna cause undue harm congestion or anything, and we can approve it, so we don't sit here for.
And it would be my preference as the city council that I think we you, you guys can, can handle it. I just wanna make sure that you guys have the
Life with this one?
Time to, to review these and permit them, but I don't see any reason why the city council needs to continue to do these. Uh, and I believe this would be a simple amendment to this franchise ordinance.
But.
All right.
And the, the biggest challenge I see too is when Intermountain Gas or Idaho Power come in with these things, they already have a plan and a date they want to start this project, and so now they can be delayed up to two weeks.
Right.
Um, so.
Well, I, I would take that feedback from you, Diane, for an amendment.
Yes.
Um, but in terms of this permit application, is there, and I don't mean that in any joking way. I mean, I, I will take that feedback and bring that back to council with something actionable, so, but for tonight on this. I.
Sorry, no, I, I think you're right.
No, I think you're very right.
Yeah, and we should pursue that, because these are.
But in the meantime.
But in the meantime, I would move to approve the encroachment permit for Intermountain Gas before twenty North Sixth Street.
Okay.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Council Member Reed.
Yes.
Council Member Ogan.
Yes.
Council Member Muni.
Yes.
Council Member Bergen.
Yes.
A motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, consideration of approval of straight armed base two road sale project. Chris Johnson, Public Works Director.
Chris Johnson, Public Works. Um, so as part of, uh, Straightmore, um, in different phases, we've had, uh, we're required to do up for street servicing, um, or ceiling. We've looked at chip ceiling in the past, uh, the cost for that to get, uh, mobilized, it does not fall within budgets that would. Um, so this one, a base two requirement to complete certain seal on the roadway, it's less than thirty-five thousand dollars to pay by developer nation, makes a place to do an L C I P account where the funds have incurred or cured additional interest that will cover the remaining balance in three thousand dollar, um, mobilization application. Um, this falls underneath, uh, below what's required for bid, and Sun Valley has a project where this company is already being mobilized. And so it reduces, uh, our mobilization fee substantially. It would probably eat up a third of our budget, uh, for this project, if you had to mobilize up here or so. Um, we're using this, uh, friction seal. Um, it's a little bit, uh, it has a little bit more granular in it than a box ceiling we had on Cowcatcher, uh, but it's not the whole course, as in thickness of a full chip ceiling. It's proven in mountain areas with plowing, they're getting about a eight to twelve year life, despite the sand, so it is durable. And, you know, this is to along the life of some better streets in Bellevue right now, and so we can save our capital funds for our district permits actually need to be.
Thank you. My name is Scotty.
Sixteen. Um, that's why I had to bring it quickly, um, so I apologize, Mary, for not getting it sooner. It was just a timeline. I didn't give the quotes quick, it's about. And, uh, this is, it's a site.
And do we know for certain that there indeed is five thousand dollars in interest in there?
Can't tell you the exact amount, but there are additional funding that you know, that are for Chestnut Street. So that account is certainly about seventy-five dollars in total.
From Catholic. Catholic's part is thirty-five.
Understood. I can't tell you where exactly, I did not know that that was your son.
Okay.
I spoke to Shelley about the extra funds. I mean, we have it in the book, capital, um, but we said, we looked at, we saw the page, it just had it through, uh, there was no designated amounts set aside for Chestnut. Um, we recently did a chip ceiling project four years ago, maybe, maybe six years ago on Chestnut. Um, so I thought it was, um, a big piece of that interest money. Probably possibly.
Really, the only money question for time about five thousand? Thirty-five thousand, I think.
What about those?
There is money in that account.
There is money, okay.
And what is this about customer responsible for traffic control notice to residents coming in from the area?
So we've agreed that we will take the street sweeper in up here and get all the gravel in, if you mind. Uh, the only residents that are gonna be affected by it um, are, are built that's going on in a house that is vacant, it's still structural progress. So we'll let those two um, shut you down, hold it for, um, duration of the application and what I, your time it takes, a couple hours, and then blocking it off throughout pedestrian and vehicular access, like just use it to drive around, block your dogs on the backside. There's plenty of parking on the straight horn. They can, you still use both the canyon sides to access the trails, so it should have a little impact on lot of application and to actual intrusion on.
So how much does that customer responsible for costing? That traffic control.
It costs to, I, I, we street, we still are sweeping the street, be, um, at least every other week or months a month, so it doesn't cost me anymore there. I didn't have to see that maintenance and, um, set out so many barriers. Those are personally not, three hours.
Pretty much.
So seventy, hundred, hundred dollars per person and, um, carry down, take down, it's gonna cost us a hundred fifty.
Uh, good call for your team, Brian, for that vote.
I have, I've notified him before you, because I don't wanna jump to you.
So can, am I confused? Is this for phase two in Straight Hard?
Yes, it's for Rosebud to, what is it, it's, it's that second loop behind the booster that goes around on the backside with the one house in the very back of the canyon.
Okay. Tom, if you have something to add.
Is there, is there any money in the budget for this question, but while these folks are in town, with Sun Valley, is there any other road to, to get money to support them too?
The problem with this, uh, it requires the roads to be of certain condition, and the only one that I assess that could possibly do would be the park subdivision, um, and talk to them, I don't know, given the timeline, I didn't have a chance to get it back up here to do a estimate on. That road, but, 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 other roads, other roads in Bellevue. I hear it, this is not a issue. It'd be satisfactory to, well satisfactory. And the higher they are, the longer the process will last. So this being a tiered road that's in about satisfactory condition, we should see at least ten, twelve year lifespan. Without paying the high sub.
I know, I know, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah. The problem with the main star, it's a tough topic, but, um, our roads don't have a base. Everything that we do to our artillery roads and our northwestern or south rivers, there's nothing to hold sealant or chip to it. Everything's gonna come back through next winter, come up to the bottom, that's gonna carry the frost seeds. It's not really about the spring. It's all, it's all the weather pattern and how everything melts off. I just don't have anything to secure. There's no oil left in these roads. They've only been roads since we started chip seal, um, forty years ago, or, or, again, we didn't do an actual base there, and they just started chip seal. So they just have not been, out to, right, some people.
If we.
On here, but it's.
If we could have, I would have loved to have got more project involved, but given that it wasn't budgeted for, and, um, this one was earmarked and we are picking back on, so I'll always save us some funds. I felt, uh, it was prudent to, to.
Question, go for it. Okay, I recommend for free friction seal specialty applicator, so, yes, but number two five dash seven two six dash R and then not, not fifty-four thousand. Shay?
Yes.
Same.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
After our, uh, item C, consideration of resort, restaurant liquor license application for Lucy's Breakfast, um, Marshall Kirk Gaston, I'd love to turn this over to you.
Yeah, my written report, back in February, we ended with a demand. And they came forward and rectified all of the issues that we had addressed in that. Um, I did a site visit on May eighteen. Um, my apologies, on May thirty-first. We got the application on May eighteen and, uh, found no violations. She did go through the, how, how first we were putting on for, uh, several, so we had high hopes.
Some discussions.
Um, if, if it's something that councils are inclined to approve, um, it should be a number of conditions, kind of, in our own code as well as state code. Slices that kind of are allowed, this is considered to be allowed, this was your, uh, licensing process that in more here with my people's job. For your licenses, so our own code, for example, in session thirty-two and thirty-three, part of Harvey fifty-four, uh, in the, this is a certain issue for accounting their cut on the part on its one through July thirty-first. So if this is issued, you might be, but until August first, when the new, plus, issue concerning that she didn't be part of the issue that's created to take that. Uh, in, in addition to that, the, um, you know, we're, and I think this probably, if you're also aware of it, no, it was obviously means a time license for the session shall promote or operate the restaurant as a bar or lounge, so there should be nothing in there that indicates that this is a bar or lounge, it's, it means a restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and then, uh, also in, in our own code, three, two, eight, where it talks about, uh, to not so alcohol liquor by the drinker off for sale, um, or give away liquor upon premises within students at any time between the hour of uh, ten P M and four P M. I guess that means, how's it in the U K, that they can't start selling until four o'clock and must quit selling at ten o'clock?
Correct.
Good. I, I didn't see any indication of the permit or, or a license that people were conditioned to, you know, that, so, um, it would be approved.
Um, this, uh, re- resort restaurant liquor license application was, uh, specifically created for this license by our city clerk, and, um, there are references in, uh, on page ninety-three, which is page two of the license application that refers to, uh, the ordinances in which you are referring to. And there's signatory acknowledgements that they have, um, kind of acknowledging consent to the provisions of those ordinances.
So does this, uh, have to, I just.
Well, only that it seemed like there's some value in being kind of specific about these conditions. They are just.
That also is included in our alcohol education, correct, Marshall?
Um, I see here in their, their application that says, you know, one or two times closed at two A M for events like karaoke. So.
So here, here's where it comes down to. Um, there are conditions within our ordinance. Um, they have been educated about the conditions within the ordinance. They've been educated on general serving, iding, age limits, all of that through the education that we are now requiring within our ordinance. Um, and so if at any time they serve alcohol, well, let's be clear, it's between four and ten, but all, or sorry, liquor, I apologize to clarify, it's liquor in particular.
Okay.
Between four P M and ten P M, um, or when the kitchen closes, because that's part of the state, um, uh, state law as well, so, or when the kitchen closes, so.
That's what my question was.
Those are all ways in which the marshals can regulate, and if they were, are in violation of, uh, any of those.
It has to be the full menu.
And it has to be the full menu, not a bar menu.
Reduction.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and to your point specifically, I was, I had that conversation, and we're planning on serving beer and wine.
After.
Correct. Or when the kitchen closes.
Up until.
Yeah. So. I'm Sean.
Uh, goodness, what about, I, I gotta serve, excuse me. Um, but they have liquor, what about the daytime? They're gonna still serve liquor today? I mean, I have liquor and all this, as you don't, but I guarantee you, these people already stretched the rules once already before they got their license, or, and before. I just, you know, a little curious. You know, I, you know, I, I find it hard to believe that they're gonna serve food. I bet they'll serve the, the whole menu till two o'clock in the morning. You know, is that, you know, they do that, do you get to serve liquor till two?
No, they only serve between four and ten.
Okay.
It's your beer and wine, you're saying until two A M?
Correct.
And ordering.
That's because that's a state reg, I shouldn't say state regulated, because it's regulated by us as well, but it's the liquor that is specifically regulated at that timeframe.
Well, you can't do karaoke without beer.
I mean.
All right, was that what you told me that?
You seem better, right?
No, you just sound better.
That's right.
You look better.
Hmm.
Something, am I supposed to do something?
I mean, there, there's more room for discussion unless it all wants to put a motion on the table, but if I don't, I wanna make sure, Tom, were you satisfied with the discussion? I know, I kind of feel like there might be some lingering questions. I'm hearing feedback that you might want in this app, application, um, moving forward in this physical application, maybe a bit more of a breakdown of you know, what our ordinances are, and that may be a checkbox acknowledgement of them versus just an reference to the ordinances and a signatory box moving forward.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I guess I maybe witnessed too many people that come in and sign up for it and dated and, you know.
No one's reading these three lines.
But, you know, th- these are all kind of critical things as far as closure and what they can do, and, and it doesn't seem like it would be too burdensome on us to have that included. Um, probably won't be the first license, you know, I don't know if this one's been issued under this.
Yes, couple of them.
I feel like, um, it, so there'll be maybe a third one that'll come along, um, and have those conditions. And I guess an additional condition that seems appropriate, again, is this side of the state, but it says that sale, these are transfers prohibited, so they know, you know.
Well, that would have to go through the state, you're going to state to even attempt to sell, um, or transfer to the state. Or they pay for it, but yes.
Yeah, it seems like it's kind of a small price that they added.
I would also.
It was on the same table, I would say.
And in regards to approval or denial of Lucy's breakfast, I'll see any more questions for, in Marshall or for the session. And in regards to approval or denial, Lucy's Breakfast, I'll see any more questions for the marshal or for the session. Motion for approval or denial. Think a swing.
Man, that's never stopped. I had a much. Just go with it. I work six months at that.
Get it.
Or it's almost nine. I move to approve the consideration of a resort restaurant liquor license application for Lucy and L C.
Second. Shay?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
No.
I hope we're onto item nine, public comments for items that are on the agenda. So anyone in the city hall, because the public.
I guess I just want to state that I closed some questions to the mayor and Public Works Department about the sewer system, whether it might be that running, what sort of insurance claim might still be in there. Oh, the last time I reported in depth on this issue, it had, it was kind of a big long story. Operations about one hundred. Also, including my question for how are the sensors for potentially toxic gases working, preventing points about smells? And what's treated in the interest, we explained the overall update on Reverium Sewer, so we would also ask are instant city continuing to offer building permits? You have things in search of this area. Or it's just gonna, well, I mean, the service is. This might even be a reminder of what's.
Some comments, so I will take a motion to adjourn.